Sure. Well Florence has taken a couple of other photos that are very important to the project. One is of a woman holding a magnifying glass.
Yes, I know that one.
And I actually look at that as almost a literal interpretation of age looking at aging. Through her glasses and through the magnifying glass, it's beautiful. And Florence took another one that I think could be hanging in any great art gallery, and it's a photo of a path through the trees. And it's dark and it's somber and it's very expressive. There is a photo of two dancers taken by Fanya Spielberg. It's joyful, it's delightful. We had a participant named Lillian Berlin. She was our oldest, she was 95 years old.
Wow.
And I knew when I started the project that some people's hands would shake. Lillian was on a walker and had Parkinson's disease and she would not, not participate. She insisted on participating and expressing her life. And her photos do shake, but I didn't know when I started the project is how beautiful those photos would be at expressing her life. So there's for instance, a photo of a piano player that is deeply moving to me. And I would like to say just a little bit more about the photo over your shoulder. Because also included is a photo they took of a hand tinted photo when they got married at the age of 20 at Cornell University. And when you compare this photo to these two beautiful young people, it's even more moving.
Wow. And you had another picture that you wanted to reference?
Yes, it's another one taken by Dr. Sacks. And it's a photograph of two sets of hearing aids and a little dish that says "I love you."
Yeah, I grew up in a household. Grandpa Burr had the hearing aid, the old kind where you wore the packet on your chest. He could tune us all out anytime he wanted to. Florence, I want to thank you so much for joining us. You are a wonderful advertisement for what I think is a great program. Brian, thank you. Thank you for sharing all this.
Thanks so much for this opportunity.
Give me the website again. Agesataging.org. Well, we're going to take a little break to segue into caregiver corner. And you're going to want to listen to this one, it's pretty interesting.
Today we're talking about caregiver stress. If you find yourself as the primary person taking responsibility for another person's activities of daily living, for example, preparing meals, helping the person get dressed and groomed, helping them with bathing and toileting needs, or helping them move from one place to another, then you are a family caregiver. There are many lovely things about being a caregiver. However, oftentimes, being a family caregiver can slowly inch up to the levels of high stress. Regardless of whether you're a family caregiver taking on these tasks from a sense of responsibility, or you're doing it from a loving place in your heart, or a combination of both, caregiver stress is a reality that cannot and should not be ignored. Signs of caregiver stress include denial about the reality of the situation, anger that treatments are not working the way you'd like to see them work, social withdrawal in that you're not going out to see friends or be with family or other activities that were once fun, anxiety levels about facing another day and what the future holds, depression which can start to break your spirit and affect your ability to cope, or irritability which then makes you react in different and negative ways. And health problems begin to take their toll, both physically and mentally. Signs of caregiver stress include denial about the reality of the situation, anger that perhaps the treatments aren't working the way you thought they would, social withdrawal from family, friends, and avoiding things that used to be fun, anxiety levels about facing another day and what the future holds, depression can begin to break your spirit and affects your ability to cope, irritability leads to moodiness and triggers negative responses and reactions. Health problems begin to take their toll, both mentally and physically, on family caregivers. Being aware of and acknowledging these signs of stress are important. So that is why we are reminding you that caring for the caregiver is also important. If the family caregiver fails, then what? Who's going to step in with caregiving? So let's talk about how to relieve some of the stresses in family caregiving. Create a family network of support, including friends. Learn about the medical condition of the person you are caring for. Seek available patient and family services through community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, senior centers, disease-specific organizations like the Alzheimer's Association, Heart Association, American Diabetes, et cetera. Call the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging for information and referrals. And there are many more resources out there that you can learn about. Being informed is a great way to minimize stress. Other ways of reducing caregiver stress include asking for clarification when you don't understand something. Find a local support group to learn more about options and resources. Fellow caregivers are a great source of support, information, and resources. Remember to give yourself credit for what you're doing. It's okay to periodically make a mistake, you learn from it. When you feel your stress levels rising, remember to step away from the situation for a few minutes. Take deep breaths to bring fresh oxygen into your bloodstream and to your brain. And then go back and take care of the matter at hand. Remember, caring for the caregiver is important too.
The project handed me a camera that allowed me to look at many things that were close to me in my environment, but that I had not carefully looked at. And in using that medium, I allowed a lot more influences to come into my life. I had the open door because I carried a camera and carried a recorder. And it made it easier for me to interact with other people than if I were to pursue them without the supervision of the project.
Offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
And once two of those three arrive, we'll be able to begin our meeting for today, Friday, Want to thank Mr. Cardness, Mr. Englander, Mr. Corretts, Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. West, and I'm Councilman Zine. We're now at eight members. Mr. Labonge has arrived. Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Waiting the arrival of Mr. Alakon, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts. And once two of those three arrive, we'll be able to begin our meeting for today, Friday, We now have Mr. Alakon, Mr. Cardness, Mr. Englander, Mr. Corretts, Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosenthal, Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Waiting the arrival of Mr. Alakon, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts. And once two of those three arrive, we'll be able to begin our meeting for today, Friday, We now have Mr. Alakon, Mr. Cardness, Mr. Englander, Mr. Corretts, Mr. Corretts, Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. West, and I'm Councilman Zine. So ladies and gentlemen, we will begin this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, December 2nd. We are at Van Nuys City Hall, where we have our meeting every other month on the first Fridays. We want to thank our Valley residents for coming out. We want to thank our colleagues for being here in the San Fernando Valley. And we will begin. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Mr. President, would you like to call the roll first?
Please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardness, Englander, Weezer, Corretts, Corretts, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, West, Zine, Garcetti, Timmer is present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Very well. First item, please.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labonge, second by Mr. Parks.
Next is committer resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander, second by Mr. Cardness.
Item number one is the Department of Building and Safety lien notice for public hearing. The department reports that this item may be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid.
There's a note to continue to December 14th.
Right, it's, it has been paid, so it can't be received and filed.
All right, so we can just receive and file that?
Yes.
All right, so on item number one, without opposition, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Receive and file paid.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Items 2 through 6 are items which public hearings have been held.
On 2 through 6, any specials, colleagues? 2 through 6, Ms. Englander?
Please.
Number 5 special, Mr. Englander?
There's nobody.
Any other specials, 2 through 6, colleagues?
Special.
Mr. Labonge? We will call that special, Mr. Labonge, number 2. Pardon me?
All together, all the river ones.
You want 2, 3, and 4?
Just put them all as one, they're all river.
All right, you want 2, 3, and 4. Call special by Mr. Labonge. So that leaves item number 6. Anyone who calls 6 special? See no one. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, next items, please.
Items 7 through 11 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
So 7 through 11, cards on what items, please?
Cards on 7B, 9, and 11.
Let's call those special. On the remaining, colleagues, any special? Open the roll, close the roll.
Oh, there's a card on 8.
8, call 8 special. So 7, 8, 9, 11, that leaves number 10. Seeing nothing on number 10. On that, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, items 12 and 13 are items which public hearings have been held.
12 and 13, anyone special, 12 or 13? Mr. Parks?
We're going to hold 12 until we talk to the CLA.
So put 12 on the table.
And there's requests to call item 13 special for Councilman Alakon.
All right. And next item, please.
Item 14 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Mr. Corretts?
I'd like to call item 14 special for Mr. Weezer.
Very well, so number 14 is special. And that concludes our agenda items for today. So with that, if we can begin our presentations for... Item 11 is coordinated with a presentation? So we'll do number 11. Madam Clerk, number 11, bring that forward, please. We'll take number 11 in a presentation, Mr. Englander? So this will be a presentation and the agenda item number 11. Presented by CD12. Mr. Englander?
Good morning, council members. Let's try that again. Good morning, council members. It's Friday. Thank you.
And we're in the valley today.
And we're in the valley today, yes. And today is Heal the Bay's annual day without a bag. It's coming up on Thursday, December 15th. And today, we are here to get the word out. We want everyone in Los Angeles to get their free reusable shopping bag and be part of this fantastic effort to keep trash out of our landfills and keep our oceans, beaches, and waterways healthy, unpolluted, and beautiful, now and for the future generations. I'm sure Tom Labonge will speak on that when the river items come up as well. We're also here to commend Heal the Bay for their amazing work to protect our oceans and beaches, which is such a huge part of our lives and our culture and our economy here in Southern California. Heal the Bay was founded in 1985 by Los Angeles residents who decided that something had to be done about the pollution in the Santa Monica Bay. It is now the region's leading nonprofit dedicated to protecting coastal waterways and watersheds. It sets the bar for successful advocacy, public-private partnerships, such as a day without a bag, awareness raising and education, and community and volunteer-driven efforts to protect...
All right. And next item, please.
Item 14 is an item which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Mr. Caretz?
I'd like to call item 14 special for Mr. Weezer.
Very well. So number 14 is special. And that concludes our agenda items for today. So with that, if we can begin our presentations for... Item 11 is coordinated with a presentation? So we'll do number 11. Madam Clerk, number 11, bring that forward, please. We'll take number 11 in a presentation, Mr. Englander? So this will be a presentation and the agenda item number 11, presented by CD 12. Mr. Englander?
Good morning, council members. Let's try that again. Good morning, council members. It's Friday. Thank you.
And we're in the Valley today.
And we're in the Valley today, yes. And today is Heal the Bay's annual day without a bag. It's coming up on Thursday, December 15th, and today we are here to get the word out. We want everyone in Los Angeles to get their free reusable shopping bag and be part of this fantastic effort to keep trash out of our landfills and keep our oceans, beaches, and waterways healthy, unpolluted, and beautiful, now and for the future generations. I'm sure Tom Labonge will speak on that when the river items come up as well. We're also here to commend Heal the Bay for their amazing work to protect our oceans and beaches, which is such a huge part of our lives and our culture and our economy here in Southern California. Heal the Bay was founded in 1985 by Los Angeles residents who decided that something had to be done about the pollution in the Santa Monica Bay. It is now the region's leading nonprofit dedicated to protecting coastal waterways and watersheds. It sets the bar for successful advocacy, public-private partnerships, such as a day without a bag, awareness raising and education, and community and volunteer-driven efforts to protect our oceans and beaches. Today, we are presenting Heal the Bay with a city resolution, and we're making Thursday, December 15th officially a day without a bag. At the heart of the day without a bag is the fact that every one of us can make an important environmental impact with your personal consumer choices. Thanks to Heal the Bay and a day without a bag, it is now fashionable to be seen at a supermarket with reusable shopping bags, as we're being demonstrated here. Look at this bag. How cool is that? Now, let me share some information on environmental impacts of plastic bags with you. The City of Los Angeles has the most successful plastic film and bag recycling program in the country. Despite that, only about 5% or 6 billion plastic bags used annually in LA County are recycled. Millions of them end up in our oceans, where they kill marine life and harm fisheries, the damage, the natural beauty that is at the heart of the coastal and our coastal tourism. Plastic bags are made from non-renewable petroleum and natural gas and increase our dependence on foreign oil. More than 4,000 barrels of oil are used every day just to make plastic bags. A single reusable bag has the potential to eliminate hundreds of plastic bags over its lifetime. So what's a day without a bag? On a day without a bag, Heal the Bay and its partners will give out thousands of free reusable shopping bags to Southern California residents, so they can give up single-use disposable bags and encourage others to do so as well. Last year, they gave out 25,000 fashionable, functional, reusable shopping bags in LA County at 171 locations. Day without a bag is organized by Heal the Bay and sponsored by its partners, LA Department of Public Works, Union Bank, and 99 Cent Stores. There's also some special offers for Day Without a Bag. 99 Cent Store will give you a free reusable bag with a $29.99 purchase. Union Bank branches are giving away reusable bags to their customers. And Ralph's Supermarket will give triple reward points for shoppers who have reusable bags in Ralph's stores across LA County. This year, for the first time, the LA County Public Library is giving out 8,000 bags at 85 branches. So to find information and locations on December 15th and what's going on and to participate, you can visit www. healthebay.org/dwab, or Day Without a Bag. I'm proud to stand here with Heal the Bay and its partners and encourage everyone to make this a green holiday season. Together, we can be sure that our kids and their kids will be able to enjoy our beaches and swim in our oceans like we did growing up here. And so on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and all of my colleagues, I present this, a day without a bag, to Heal the Bay, and say, please join us on December 15th. Thank you. And I want to have you speak as well. So I'll present this.
Thank you, councilmen. Thank you, everyone, for supporting Day Without a Bag. We're especially grateful for the proclamation. This is the fifth year that we do Day Without a Bag, and it really is a movement to educate the wonderful citizens of LA and greater LA about reusing bags. So single-use disposable bags, like the councilman said, harm the environment but also harm our communities. It makes it a place where we don't want to necessarily live or enjoy living when it's dirty and polluted by plastic bags, single-use plastic bags. But these fashionable bags, like the councilman was mentioning, actually make a big difference. Not only are you being environmental, and not only are you being conscious, but you're actually making a fashionable statement. They're fun, they're convenient, and they're good for the environment. We thank you for your support. We look forward to one day having a day without a bag every day, not just on December 15th, but nonetheless, we encourage you on December 15th to bring your tote bags if you don't already have some. That'll be the day when we give tens of thousands of plus, I'm sorry, of reusable tote bags, of reusable tote bags all over LA. So highly recommended that you come out, use a tote bag, get a free tote bag, and join us on that huge effort. Thank you so much on behalf of Heal the Bay and many other nonprofits that are working very hard to do this, to make our communities cleaner and our environment safer. Thank you.
We now have Mr. Kukorian, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Labonge, and a public speaker, Jason Ackerman. So we'll start with Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it's terrific that Heal the Bay is being honored today. Thank you, Mr. Englander. If you could please hold up the fashionable bag again. See, it's so fashionable, it even matches Mr. Englander's tie, which is really impressive that you're color-coordinated that way.
That was planned.
I just want to thank Mr. Englander for bringing Heal the Bay here to be recognized. And it's, I think, fitting that the council member who represents the district farthest away from the Santa Monica Bay in the City of Los Angeles is doing this. Because what most people don't fully understand is that our oceans throughout the world are being choked with plastic debris. It's killing our marine life throughout the world. There is a floating plastic island in the middle of the Pacific Ocean that is generated not from debris that falls off of ships, but debris that's generated inland, in places that, you know, where our stormwater system takes it down to the ocean. So every plastic bag that goes into the street, every bit of debris that goes into the street in Mr. Englander's district is going to end up in the Pacific Ocean. And people need to fully understand the impacts that they're having on our global environment. It's great to recognize Heal the Bay. I had the pleasure of working closely with Heal the Bay when I was a member of the state legislature and actually creating legislation that would free our oceans of much of this plastic debris by imposing best practices on plastics manufacturers. We were never successful in implementing a plastic bag ban while I was in the legislature, but I know that Mr. Caretz has been steadfast in that effort and others. And I'm looking forward to the day when we can really, once and for all, tackle this problem so that it isn't just a day without a bag, but forever without disposable plastic bags choking our environment. So, Mr. Englander, thank you, and Heal the Bay, to Heal the Bay, thank you for all of your ongoing work.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And I'm at the end of it all, at the beach, where the plastic ends up. Two things I say. First, we should have enough of the reusable bags in our cars. It took me a good year and a half to finally get my act together enough that wherever I go, I have one of these bags. Oh, I left it at home, or I forgot it. So I say to anybody who's really wanting to do this, get enough of them, put them in your trunk of your car or your cars, and so that when you get into the store, you have it with you. And now, it's like me with my water jug. I don't do the plastic anymore, but it reminds me that this is much better and healthier because we get the plastic going into the ocean too and into the landfills, and it's made with oil and all that. So the water's got to be, just like the reusable bag, it's got to be this. And, you know, unfortunately, I've seen the plastic, as Mr. Kukorian's talking about, just going right into the ocean through Ibuona Wetlands and through the other areas. And frankly, one time I did a video on it, and I was in the water there in one of the canals, and it was just covered with plastic. So it's a no-brainer for us. My bigger question is not rhetorical, but to my colleagues, why is our ban on plastic still languishing somewhere and that we, as a city, haven't done our ban like the county did, like Santa Monica did? And I know we're waiting for the legal this and that, but I'm tired of waiting, and I think I'd like to see that resurrected back among all of us and let us, as the City of Los Angeles, show leadership on the whole notion of plastic. But thank you again, Heal the Bay, and thank you, my colleague, for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Cardenas.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, the representative from Heal the Bay?
Evelyn Bravo, I'm the cleanups manager at Heal the Bay.
Okay. And also, I wanted to ask you a question, if you don't, a couple of questions. Do you speak more than one language?
I do. I'm Latina, my parents are from Mexico, and so I speak Spanish as well.
And does Heal the Bay have an effort reaching out to all communities throughout Los Angeles or just the English-speaking community?
We're actually trying to reach out to the greater Los Angeles community, which is a bilingual community, a multilingual community, I should say. A lot of our programs are actually in various languages, but we have a Spanish language outreach team right now that's very strong. We actually went live yesterday with our new Spanish website that has been really beautifully newly developed and designed to really target our community and educate in a way where it's culturally sensitive and impacting.
Good. And also, I'd just like to remind the community that when it comes to doing the right thing, it knows no party affiliation, it knows no language. If you're doing the right thing and it's best for the community at large, we should not put up artificial barriers or assume that because someone doesn't speak a certain language or they speak another language, that they don't understand what's good for the community. And I just want to thank you and Heal the Bay for your multilingual efforts, because this is a multilingual community. And also, I'd like to thank my colleague Mitch Englander, who's newer to the council than the rest of us, but who certainly is taking on tremendous issues and important issues that affect every part of our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Labonge.
Mitch, very good there. You know, as a deputy of the great Smith, all that you have done, and as Mr. Cardenas complimented you, but also Miss Bravo, thank you. And I recall the name of Dorothy Green, who was the great founder of Heal the Bay, who's up in heaven, and that she'd be pleased with this. I was just thinking, I remember when I was a kid, I'm 58 now, we used to collect bottles, and we'd have enough bottles to get enough money to buy a hamburger or a sourdough grilled cheese or something like that. And I'm just thinking, because there's such resistance, members, and some people like it, maybe we should, even on, and Mr. Rosenthal picked up his little fashionable West Side bottle there, but that we maybe ask that, we want to keep our streets clean, then maybe we do put, like they used to have on the bottles, two or three cents, not just the weight to try to get it back. Something to think about. And also, there's no law against picking up trash. So any citizen within the sound of my voice, the winds blew hard the last few days, and a lot of trashy debris went through. And we all can pick it up, because if we don't pick it up, it gets into the drains. If it gets into drains, it gets into the rivers, it gets in the rivers, it gets in the ocean, it gets in the ocean, it gets into Charlie. You know who Charlie is?
I sure do.
Who's Charlie?
Charlie Tuna.
Very good. Zine, that's why he's president of the council. Good job, Zine.
Charlie Tuna, K-101.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zine. Thank you, everybody. God bless the members of Dorothy Green.
We're not done yet. Mr. Caretz?
Well, thank you to Mr. Englander and Heal the Bay for bringing this before us. I think it's really great that we start to get people used to the idea of using more permanent canvas bags instead of single-use bags. I hope this is a first step with a day without these single-use bags. Hopefully, we will move forwards towards a year without single-use bags and pass the measure before the council to ban both plastic and paper, so we completely eliminate debris in the oceans and move the city and hopefully an example for the world forward, so we stop doing what we've been doing for all these decades to our oceans.
Thank you, Mr. Caretz. I just want to offer my congratulations to you, Councilman Englander, and to Heal the Bay for the great work. We're changing behavior, changing attitudes, just like recycling bottles and cans for the nickel return, same type of thing, changing the values so we can preserve what's left of our beautiful planet. We have a public speaker on this matter, Jason Ackerman. Mr. Ackerman, and then we will vote on the matter.
Good morning. So I am a student at Cal State Northridge, and at Cal State Northridge, we take sustainability very seriously. And we were one of the groups that came out to the Northridge Neighborhood Council to endorse our neighborhood council to support not just a day without a bag, but a plastic bag ban. Because, as has been mentioned before, it chokes the oceans. I remember being a child and doing a cleanup effort at Balboa Park and cleaning up the creek. And to my, you know, I thought I was grabbing one plastic bag, and to my horror, you know, I pulled it out of the side of the creek, and it was just caked in. There were just layers and layers of plastic bags, like archaeologists will be finding plastic bags for generations here. And I think what we need to do is just end it. I want to see a resolution, no more single-use plastic bags, period. And, you know, when people get used to that, paper bags should go too. We at CSC Northridge are making bags of our own out of post-consumer product rather than using plastic, which is what a lot of these trendy tote bags are made out of, nylon or, you know, some kind of plastic synthetic material. We make ours out of cotton, so they're machine washable, and they create jobs with students. And I would implore you all to pursue this to the fullest degree and protect, you know, my generation from the trash, you know, the trash. And this will not do it alone. This will not get all the debris out of the ocean, but it'll be a good start. We need to go after single-use plastic bottles next, but one step at a time, single-use plastic bags have to go. Thank you.
Donna Peerman?
I mean, it's great to see, you know, try to get rid of plastic bags, and renewable bags are nice, but something that everyone seems to be fitting in, that a lot of people need to take trash out, are we supposed to now then put our trash in those renewable bags and throw out those renewable bags? Are we supposed to hold it in our hand and carry it down to the trash can? So if you were to get rid of all plastic, or actually the paper bags is what I'm thinking of, if you were to get rid of all paper bags, then what you're going is that you have no avenue for throwing out trash. So keep that in mind. I mean, I have renewable bags, and Whole Foods is now paper bags or renewable bags. So that's a great idea, but don't get rid of all paper bags, because, you know, people can't throw out their trash. Thank you.
On that matter, colleagues, it is an agenda item, number 11. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Very well, thank you. Congratulations. Next presentation, we have CD 5, Mr. Caretz's presentation.
Well, colleagues, I'm here with my colleague, Councilmember Kukorian, representatives from the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, and Levitt Pantheon of the Department of Children and Family Services to promote the 13th Annual Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association Holiday Toy Drive, which will be held on Sunday, December 4th. And year in and year out, this event draws crowds from all over the San Fernando Valley who come to donate unwrapped toys for a good cause. The Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association is helping the Los Angeles Department of Children and Family Services by donating toys to some of the over 70,000 needy children in Los Angeles County, so they may have a happy holiday season. I'm here with Santa Claus and Soha board members, including Jules Fear, who I believe is going to be the one to say a few words about the holiday toy drive.
Thank you, council members. Thank you very much. And for the past 13 years, we have worked very hard each year to come up with a successful toy drive, which we do. And the toys that we have collected over the years have been distributed by the Department of Children and Family Services to an awful lot of very happy children. So we want to thank our council members for their support. We want to thank the police department, the fire department, and everybody else, and especially the community that has come out to drop off toys. And so once again, thank you all very, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Caretz, and thank you, Jules, for the terrific work that you and the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association do every year with this great toy drive. I think, you know, very often, people underestimate the degree of need that we have in the San Fernando Valley, the number of families who are suffering, the number of children who won't have a toy at this Christmas, the number of children that, in fact, are getting through week to week, even dealing with hunger. And so I'm especially pleased to stand with my colleague, Mr. Caretz, and reminding everyone about this toy drive and recognizing Soha for the tremendous work that they're doing to really make a difference in a child's life. So anybody who's watching, if you'd like to participate in this, you can bring your toy to Gelson's, which is at 4520 Van Nuys Boulevard this coming Sunday for the toy drive. Santa will be there. From 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock, Santa will be there. And if I might add, as long as you're at Gelson's, you might stop in and pick up a non-perishable food item, which you can then drop off at one of my district offices for our holiday food drive to stamp out hunger as well, which we're hosting again this year. So, Mr. Caretz, thank you to all of you from Soha, and especially to Santa, thank you very much for making a difference in the lives of the children in the San Fernando Valley.
Well, thank you very much, and we'll see you on December 4th for the holiday.
Mr. Caretz, could we hear from Ho-Ho? Mr. Corretts, could we hear from Ho-Ho-Ho behind you?
Yeah.
I mean, we should give Ho-Ho-Ho and the little reindeer next to Ho-Ho-Ho. We should hear from them in this lovely season.
Ho-Ho-Ho, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and receive this award, and I hope people will continue to come out and support us at the toy drive. I hope to see you there on Sunday.
How about the reindeer?
That's one of the joys of Christmas, to bring a little laughter and a little bit joy to the needy children.
Great. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you, colleagues.
And I think our department of, from the Department of Children and Family Services may want to say something, too.
Good morning, councilmembers. I just want to read a letter that was given to me by one of the recipients of the toys that they received last year. And this young man named Ryan, he wrote, "Thank you so much for my really cool mongoose bike. I love it so much. Also, thank you for the lock, so it doesn't get stolen, and for the helmet and pads, so I don't get injured severely. I really like the design on my helmet. The pegs are cool. I always go out riding. I like the color of my bike, and the wheels have a design of flame. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for my brand-new bike. This is the best gift I've ever gotten in my life. Thanks again." And I just want to say to the community, thank you so much for always giving back to foster children. They go through so much, and just having a gift under their tree meant so much to them. And as a social worker and a supervisor, and I work with these families every day, I really appreciate you going the extra mile by taking your own money and going out and purchasing these items for our kids. And I just want to say happy holidays, and thank you all for giving back to our kids.
Thank you. We have Mr. Englander for comments.
I wanted to thank you for doing this, and both Paul Kocorian and Paul Corretts for bringing Santa, but bringing the idea that there are so many families in our communities that don't have the ability to have a toy. And it's heart-wrenching when you see a child on Christmas, or on Hanukkah, not have a toy to open. And it's heart-wrenching when you are able to provide that. It's extremely rewarding, because oftentimes, these are the only toys they're ever going to have the entire year. And whatever that is, it means that somebody cares and is making a difference. We've been having the toy drive at PALS for many years, the Police Activities Leadership Center, and the kids line up at 5:00 in the morning, many of them barefoot, and/or in shorts, or no jackets, because it's cold out, waiting for their opportunity for hours just to have a toy. And so, it is so important, particularly now more than ever, in these tough economic times, to get the word out, to get people involved, to donate gifts for families in need. You know, a lot of people think about the parents and those who are struggling, but the kids suffer because they don't know any better. And they don't know what's going on, and they don't know why they're impacted. So, it really sends a great message that we all care about each other, and I applaud your efforts in bringing this forward, and bringing it to everybody's attention, and continuing this movement. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and a happy season to all. Thank you very much.
And one more time, just a reminder, again, this is going to take place December 4, on Sunday, at Gelson's Market, 4520 Van Nuys Boulevard in Sherman Oaks, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. And happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. And our final presentation for today is Council District 2, Mr. Kocorian. And after that, we will continue with the agenda for today. Mr. Kocorian.
Very much, Mr. President. Today, I'm very honored and pleased, gentlemen, if you could join me, very honored and pleased to be able to take a moment to recognize two of our many heroic Los Angeles Police Department officers. These gentlemen from the Foothill Division have stood out with an act of extraordinary heroism that I just wanted to take a moment to recognize. All of our officers, of course, are trained to react to unusual circumstances on a moment's notice, without a lot of time to think, without a lot of time to prepare. And that's exactly what happened when Officer Sanchez and Officer Fernando Sanchez and Officer Alex Valencia, on September 14, were on patrol, and when they were flagged down by a citizen on the 10,000 block of West Huxford in Sun Valley. The citizen led them to a parked motorhome, which was already becoming engulfed in flames. Apparently, a burning cigarette had ignited a mattress. You can imagine, a recreational vehicle, how quickly something like that will fill with toxic, fatal smoke. And yet, without considering their own personal safety, Officer Sanchez and Officer Valencia quickly entered the motorhome, found a woman inside, who was confused, dazed, refused to come out, and against all odds, they were able to manage to get this woman out amid the flames, amid the smoke, and got her out to her safety. Both officers suffered minor smoke inhalation, but as you can see, they've fully recovered and are back on the job, and they're here with us today to receive a small measure of recognition that they are so richly due. And so, I want to recognize and introduce first Officer Fernando Sanchez, Jr., who is a native of the San Fernando Valley. Both officers are Sun Valley guys. Officer Sanchez is a graduate of Poly High School, received a bachelor's degree in sociology with a focus on criminology from CSUN. And in 2006, he attained his lifelong dream of becoming a police officer and joining the ranks of the LAPD. Officer Sanchez is joined today by, as I understand, his father, Fernando Sanchez, Sr., his older brother, Miguel, who is currently training to become an LAPD officer, Miguel's wife, Norma, and their son, Proximo, and Officer Sanchez's girlfriend, Bianco Osorio. And Officer Sanchez, I just want to say congratulations, and thank you very, very much for your extraordinary heroism. And as I mentioned, both Officer Sanchez and Officer Valencia are from the very neighborhood that they were serving on that day. Officer Valencia is also a native of the San Fernando Valley. He grew up in the Sun Valley area. He has six older siblings. He's a proud graduate of El Camino Real High School. He's been married to his wife, Alma, for 15 years, and is the proud father of two girls and a boy, Aracele, Alejandro II, and Lea. Prior to becoming an officer, he worked in management for many years, but then was able to fulfill his desire to serve our city and his community by joining the LAPD nearly a decade ago. And as I understand, Officer Valencia has his family here today, and is joined also by his brother, Ambrosio, and his good friend, Jose Manuel Leva. Officer Valencia, congratulations, and thank you on behalf of the people of Los Angeles for your service and for your heroism.
Gentlemen, would you like to make any comments? I mean, you're on the streets every day, handling radio calls, taking care of business. It's now your time to let the public know what you feel.
Well, sir, first of all, we wanted to thank the opportunity. You know, this is just part of our job. We appreciate this. You know, every day we go out there, and, you know, we have the opportunity to impact people's life in a positive way. And we were happy that on that day, we were able to do so. And we're going to continue to have that opportunity every day, you know, to make a positive impact out there.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Thank you for honoring our fine LAPD officers. With that, colleagues, we are now ready to continue with the agenda. Madam Clerk.
Item 2, called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Mr. Labonge.
Is anyone here to report on that, from the Planning Department?
We did have a public hearing, so we're going to...
I understand that.
I know. I understand. We have a card, but we already had a public hearing, so we're going to just hear from the Planning Department on that matter.
Anybody here from Mr. Reyes's district at all? Because Mr. Reyes is a champion here, and I don't know if...
Mr. Reyes is staff, I don't believe, is here today.
Would we want to bump this?
He's excused, but is a staff here.
Because of all these river issues, it's always good to hear from Mr. Reyes on that. That's what I was just thinking.
Well, would you like to continue it, since there's...
Well, I guess, does anybody object to that? Because there's no rush on any of these, right? Two, three, and four, you know?
Anyone have any other comments on these items, the river projects?
Well, I would just say...
Mr. Cardenas?
I'd like to make a suggestion to my colleague, Tom Labonge. You're absolutely right. Councilmember Reyes has been carrying this matter every day of his City Hall life as a staffer and as a councilmember. Why don't we put this over, and then we could contact Reyes's office and see if they would like us to put it over? And then, we'll give us a few minutes to do so.
Or just we could do two, three, and four, because I think it's, all of us should hear this. This is significant information. Are you skilled and up-to-date on the river district, getting on the ordinance and all of that? So, I think it would be important to hear it. And I just look at, so, Mr., I know you've got a part of the river, and a big, beautiful part.
What we can do is hold it on the desk. We have about six or seven more items, and then we can talk to the lead person, and then continue, today or next week.
I agree.
All right. I just want to know what we're going to do. Are we going to continue it? Or are we going to hear it?
I'm going to call this officer, Reyes.
We'll hold two, three, and four on the desk. Two, three, and four is going to be held on the desk. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 5, called special by Councilmember Englander.
Mr. Englander, I understand you want to continue, item 5 to January 3.
Yes.
So, without opposition, item 5 will be continued to January 3. Next item, please.
Item 7B, called special for cards.
Number 7. Max Sanchez, and Anchor Patel. Number 7, sir, two minutes.
Yes, Thomas Nitti. We support the recommendation of the Housing Department that the property be taken out of REAP, and in the event there's any testimony otherwise, we ask for brief opportunity to rebut it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Max Sanchez, followed by Anchor Patel.
Good morning. Max Sanchez, I'm the representative for the owner at the subject property on 4620 Coliseum. And we're being represented by Tom Nitti, our attorney.
Anchor Patel.
I'm just going to take a quick minute to talk about REAP, right, the Rent Escrow Account Program. It's where our fine city goes into people who own buildings, and finds things that are wrong with them, and then puts them into this account where they can no longer collect rent. It's a way that the city, I love this part of it, right, where all the city councilmen are busy on their BlackBerries, and having these other conversations on the side, regular, right? This is a dog and pony show, don't get mistaken. And the REAP, right, the Rent Escrow Account Program, is just another way that the city takes money from people. Bill Hui, I know you guys know Bill Hui, and he comes out here and rails against this program, because it's just indicative of how the city uses its so-called jurisdiction and power in ways that are offensive to us. Nothing new there, though, huh? That's one minute.
On that item, it's before us, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 8, called special for cards.
Anchor Patel, number 8.
So, this one goes into the bureaucracy that we have to deal with. You've got to have a motion to accept donations. The fire department's getting, what, an ice machine, a washer, a dryer, and we've got to go through all this hassle? This is indicative of the bureaucracy that you all talk about that we need to get rid of, but it's the same old system again and again. It continues to go on. And again, you know, the city councilmen are walking around, there's Tom Labonge behind me right now. These people don't pay attention to half the things that are going on here.
Ms. Patel, let's stay focused on the item, please.
Stay focused on the bureaucracy that we're trying to deal with, right?
Stay focused on the item about the fire department, sir. Thank you.
About the firefighters. It's a $5,237.68 item also. That's amazing. It's $5,000, and we're dealing public time. And I hate to be using public time on this, but you guys use public time on so many things that are so less relevant, that I just feel like I have the opportunity to use this time, and so I do, to point out the fact that this bureaucratic mess is perpetuated by you guys on a regular basis. And you guys need to do something about it. That's also a minute.
Thank you. On that item, Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. I think it's important that we clarify for the public and the taxpayers of Los Angeles, that one of the reasons why we have a formal process for accepting donations, let me give you an example of something that could cost the people of Los Angeles a lot of money, that may have or could start off as a wonderful gesture. Let's say somebody has some computers that they'd like to donate to a firehouse, and then they donate the computers, and then, oops, low and behold, they need some software. Now, the computers are free, but the software is going to cost $500 per computer, and there's three computers. Then, all of a sudden, we feel compelled, since they're donated, and the community's expecting them to use them, now we have to go ahead and make them operable, and we have to spend the $500 on the software. And then, one thing leads to another and another. Basically, what we're required to do as stewards of the budgeting of the City of Los Angeles, which is the city council, is that we need to make sure that even though it seems like a wonderful gesture, and we are in fact accepting it, and I can speculate that it would be unanimous that we accept this formally, this gift to Fire Station Number 7, which is in my district. I'm grateful for this gift. Yet, at the same time, it's important for us to understand whether or not this gift is going to fit, and secondly, whether or not there's going to be consequences or costs in order for us to implement this gift as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. Mr. Cardenas, on that item, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 9, called special for cards.
Number 9, Arnold Sachs, Anchor Patel. Let's take Anchor Patel first. He's here in the valley, then we'll go downtown to Arnold Sachs.
Right. This is relative to an amendment to an existing agreement with PA Consulting to identify cost-reduction options associated with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. Where is the Ray Pairs Advocate, guys? We're talking about all these other things. Voted, approved, with greater than 70%. You're going to bring it up? Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl. Because absolutely, we're talking about how much money we're spending in an oversight on the LADWP. Hello? The people voted with a greater than 70% for the Office of Ray Pairs Advocate. You guys are still sitting on it. You guys are still sitting on it. It's amazing that these things don't get done. I feel the same way, though, right? We run in circles, get nothing done, waste a lot of time. I come up here, spend my two minutes of public comment railing. Half you guys are still on your BlackBerries on a regular basis. It's amazing, guys. Last time, I used the words "God," space "damn," space "it," and Councilmember Zion said, "That's offensive language." You know what's offensive language? Your silence, your inability to get stuff done.
Stay on the focus, please.
God damn it, guys!
Of the issue. Thank you. Let's go downtown Arnold Sachs.
Thank you. Good morning. Arnold Sachs. An existing agreement with PA Consulting, and you're going to submit an invoice to the LAPD, LADWP, for payment upon execution of services. There should be an execution. Should be more than one, but not of services. PA Consultings. Let me go through my memory. Oh, yeah, PA Consultings. Didn't they do the consultation for the ECAF when the city was facing, the DWP was facing bankruptcy? Who was that old nut that was the head of the DWP? Who, "We can't make the transfer"? That was two years ago. PA Consultings, they were involved. And who paid that bill? Not DWP? No, 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 no. That was city, general funds, because DWP didn't hire them. And this is the same thing. DWP is now coming before the city council and saying, "We want to hire these people. We want to increase the contract." The city is saying, "We're going to increase the contract, and then we're going to get DWP to pay." Fat chance that could happen, but it sounds good, and it looks good, and everybody... Honest Jan Perry, if you had been still on the pro temp, I'm sure you'd be concerned about the openness and transparency about this, because you're head of the Energy Department, and they audit inefficiency, man. By the way, it looks like a giant tomato. Where's the, what about that? Don't you audit an efficient, about a contract that you say DWP is going to pay when you know... know damn well they didn't pay the last time when they were talking about the same company for the ECAF? You remember that? City was going bankrupt. We're losing our shorts. And low and behold, in all that time and all that crap, this year, no, no talk about a transfer? No discussion with PA Consultings about how they managed to make a transfer of 256 million in two fiscal years? But you know what? It's open, no it isn't. No, 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 not at all.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Sachs, your time is over. And we're back here and it is called a festive holiday vest. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, thank you, Santa's helper up there.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
In his sweater. Come on up, Raffio, to talk about two things. The first thing is, I want you to talk about this motion, why we're amending it and what the federal requirements are that, that obviously require us to do this. And secondly, of course, we saw the LA Times editorial and they're again bashing the Council, which they frankly don't understand the process you're going through to do it. Obviously, all of us want a ratepayer advocate in place yesterday, but there are steps you have to go through that make sense. So first, address the agenda item and then just comment on, on where we are on bringing in an advocate.
Certainly. Water and Power is in the process of actually next week, the Board will be considering the Water Quality Adjustment Factor proposal, which will go forward to this body.
Identify yourself, please.
Raffio Paredo with the Chief Legislative Analyst Office. And as a result of that, our office will extend a contract with PA Consulting to conduct that review as well as a review of the existing rate proposal that they've announced as of last summer. So, that proposal, they've indicated they need in order to maintain their operations. So, with respect to the ratepayer advocate process and so forth, the filing period for the application period actually ends today. The committee will convene next week, December 8th, and consider the applications, the resumes that have been submitted to Personnel Department and Ralph Anderson, the recruitment firm. They have, the recruitment firm has informed us that there are approximately 30 resumes, applications that have been submitted, and that process will start next week. The Chair of the Committee has indicated to the, to the staff that it is his objective to have the process hopefully finalized by mid-January of 2012.
So the Council isn't dragging its feet, you're just going through the process.
Mr. Rosendahl, can you use the microphone so the viewers home can hear you, please?
Just that these chairs are so low, I've got to keep getting up-
Oh, you're so tall.
Yes, that's right. Again, explain what I just asked you.
Yeah, your, your question about dragging, no, the, the, the process started in October, as was mandated, that was the next step prior to selection. The committee was formed and the committee's been working for the past three months and that committee process should, assuming the, the resumes are strong and so forth and viable candidate comes out of that, that should, that process should finalize in mid-January.
Okay, because we don't want the cart before the horse, we really want the citizen expression process and, and involvement to be a critical part, that's why we voted for that, absolutely. Okay.
Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson can help you move your chair up, by the way.
I need somebody with those skills.
Yeah, I think the room was designed for Mr. Wesson's height, that's the problem.
Well, I don't know about that, watch that.
Mr. Labonge?
Would you like to add anything, this is the Head of Water System for Water and Power? And how this is important for Water and Power?
Yeah, Jim McDaniel, Senior Assistant General Manager, in charge of the water system. We've, we've put on, for the whole Department of Water and Power, we've put on hold all of our rate requests and deferred many projects so that we could allow the ratepayer advocate to get on board. The one area that we have some, some critical time pressures is this water quality rate adjustment because we have a consent agreement or a compliance agreement with the Department of Public Health for enforcement of federal drinking water quality regulations, and so that's what's driving this right now.
Public health, which is so important, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kocorian, then Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to follow on Mr. Rosendahl's point for a moment because I think sometimes some of our public speakers who don't see, who only see what's happening in this horseshoe, don't necessarily understand the work that's, that this Council is engaged in, in dealing with very difficult and complex issues like creating an entirely new office of the ratepayer advocate. And so I do want to just say for the record that Ms. Perry's office and my office have been working for months with the Department of Water and Power, with the City Attorney's Office, with the CLA's Office, with the CAO, with the Personnel Department, and also drawing input from our neighborhood council activists on the ratepayer advocate in helping to draft the initial implementing ordinances that will be necessary once this ratepayer, once the ratepayer advocate is selected. So as soon as that selection takes place, we'll be prepared to be able to bring ordinances forward to the Council so that that office will be able to start going as soon as the selection process takes place. So the fact that it's not taking place here in this meeting doesn't mean that it's not taking place. We're all working very, very hard to grapple through some very complex, difficult issues and create an entirely new system which will serve the people of this city for many, many years to come very, very well.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, and what's before us, I know we're discussing a number of things related to the advocate and everything else, but what's before us today is an amendment to an existing contract for consultants that advises us on fee increases and et cetera. Now, the last time we had this contract before us, it was a surprise to many of us that we had such a large amendment. So here today, you've analyzed this, you scrubbed it, this is all that will be necessary to conduct those services that you've mentioned in the, that's mentioned in the outline, in the motion. We'll have no other amendments for these services, we'll be comfortable, we'll get no more surprises?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Alright, that's all the speakers on the queue. The matters before us for a vote, colleagues, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Very well, thank you. Mr. Labonge?
With Mr. Reyes's office for next Wednesday, if the river issues, two, three, and four, did we continue to next Wednesday?
So let's, without-
They are, uh, uh, thank you.
Mr. Labonge with Mr. Englander, second, I think there's no opposition, if there is, see no opposition, we'll continue two, three, and four to next Wednesday.
That's December 7th for the record, Mr. President.
To December 7th for two, three, and four, thank you. We have a number of public comment cards, we'll go public comment now and then after that, we will then return to the items, but before we do that, we have a very special presentation by Mr. Kocorian. And then we'll go into public comment, Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues, and sorry to interrupt the agenda briefly, but I do want to say how pleased I am that by happenstance today we happened to be meeting here in the San Fernando Valley. Because with us today is a woman who has for a decade and a half left an indelible mark on the San Fernando Valley in communities throughout the Second Council District. And that is my renowned field deputy, Pat Davenport, who's here with us today. And after 15 years of service to CD2, today will be Pat's last day in working for the Council, and so I wanted to bring her up today and recognize her work just briefly. Pat is the daughter of a city employee. She has served CD2 through three Council members and somehow managed to maintain her sanity. If you- Pat says that's questionable. If you drive anywhere in CD2, anywhere through the eastern San Fernando Valley and look out the window of your car, you're going to see the impact of Pat Davenport's work. You're going to see parks and park buildings, you're going to see beautification of medians, you're going to see street improvements, you're going to see trees that are there because of the work that Pat Davenport has done. Throughout that time, every major public safety event that's happened in this part of the San Fernando Valley, Pat has been at the center of, whether it's floods, fires, large crime events, Pat is there and, and has been so, so prominent in doing that, that last year, the Fire Department recognized her as the honorary Fire Chief of the LAFD. And so, I know that all of us recognize, all of us who are on the Council recognize that the work that we do is, is entirely dependent upon having skilled, dedicated staff and that what we do is such a team effort and that the majority of our work doesn't happen here in the horseshoe, the majority of our work happens out in the field when we're serving our constituents. And the way we serve our constituents is through our extraordinary field deputies and, and I, for my own sake, the quintessential field deputy who's demonstrated that dedication and that ability for over a decade and a half is here with us today, Pat Davenport. And if it weren't enough that today is her last day and it's a Council Day and we're here in the Valley, today also happens to be her birthday as well. So I just wanted to recognize Pat Davenport.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Labonge, Pat, for a moment, Mr. Labonge has some comments, Pat. Then we'll sing happy birthday to you also.
We're going to do that right away, but, well, the nice thing, Mr. Kocorian, field deputies do the job, they really do. And I know from 27 years of like work, it's an opportunity to really help people and you're, the very great connection of the city government, so Pat, congratulations and happy birthday as well.
Mr. Labonge, why don't you lead us in the happy birthday song for Pat Davenport?
Everybody, all the Councils stand up, come on, on birthday, it's good to- Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Pat. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much, this was, okay, I was trying to figure out, they wanted me over here to help and I really hadn't been able to do anything, so what am I doing? I have work back in the office, even today. I, I want to thank Paul, along with two prior Council members who gave me the opportunity, but particularly Paul, who's given me this last couple of years to really, again, continue work that for me has been a blessing. I stumbled into this job almost 15 years ago and found that I could make a difference. And it has been an honor and a privilege to, to do the work, sometimes a challenge, but an honor and a privilege. And I just want to thank you and thank Paul and all of Paul's staff who are amazing people to work with. This has been an amazing last couple of years and a, a perfect cap to what I have been able to do over the years. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Pat Davenport, congratulations on your retirement, Mr. Weezer?
I just want to, Pat, you know you're a great field rep when even your work is heard about in the east side in my district, we've heard about your work, so congratulations and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you again, Pat, congratulations to you. We're now going to go to public comment and we'll begin with Candido Mares, Candido, followed by Brendan Huffman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and before I speak on my main issue, I just want to thank Ms. Pat Davenport, I had the privilege of working with her for three terms and she is the standard by which I measure all people that work in city, with the city, because, Pat, you've been an outstanding person to work with and you know what? You're the best, so thank you very much. Mr. President, Councilmembers, Candido Mares, proud resident of the 12th District, represented by Mitch Englander, where we have no boundaries from the east side to the west side, from the north side to the south side, we're all one city. Mr. Zine, I want to thank you, because of your help, we're going to be able to have our Christmas party, Knights Columbus Christmas Party, the 18th, you're going to be our honored guest. And because of you and Walmart, we're going to have close to 1,200 kids and 1,200 gifts and bags for all those kids, so thank you very much. But I also would like to thank Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Perry, they're not here, I know they're stepping down, but I want to thank them for their years of service. And to you, Mr. Wesson, we want to thank you because we know that you have the vision and the ability to lead us in the right direction. And as I've said many times before, in this horseshoe, we have the ability, the talent, and we just need the will. If we come together as one city, there's nothing we can do, we can fight all day, Mr. President, and we go nowhere, but if we work together, can you imagine what we can do? This is the greatest city in the world and, you know, none of, none of us have, know how long we're going to be here on this world, but if you just do something each day and you forget the past and you move forward with the goodness in your hearts, I think we can accomplish a lot. So I look forward to your leadership, Mr. Wesson and Mr. Reyes, and again, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, good yong tef, and just thank you very much for the kindness, just one, thank you.
Candido, thank you.
Kwanzaa, and Kwanzaa.
Thank you, thank you for your support for this great community. Now what is this? Toluca. Take it away, Coach.
Thank you, Councilmembers, I'm going to be unfurling a banner momentarily, I wanted your permission before I did that, so I stopped at security.
As long as it's not offensive.
This sign is permitted, Councilmember.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
A permitted sign.
Also have-
Has it been approved by the city attorney? Alright, there you go, you got it.
Thank you, Judith. I have three colleagues from other baseball leagues who, and I think if we could just get through a quick presentation, we'll get this through in two or three minutes. So I'll introduce myself first, I'm Brendan Huffman, I'm a volunteer at Toluca Baseball, where both my kids play. And all of us here are volunteers and there are hundreds of them around the city who put in hours and hours each week, all year round, to make sure that thousands of families throughout Los Angeles have a place where their kids can play in a safe nurturing environment and teams where they can build character. Our nonprofit youth sports are fully run by dedicated teams of volunteers, we're moms and dads, who volunteer our time so our kids have a great place to, to play and to grow up. As volunteers, we coach, we mentor, we now care for the fields ourselves after another round of city cutbacks, and we take pride in our fields and realize that they belong to everyone in Los Angeles. We just want to bring your attention to something very important about the proposed sign ordinance. Reading the Planning Department report, it appears that signs and banners such as what I'm about to show you will be covered by this ordinance. And while I unfurl it, I'll, I'll go to the next person who filed a speaker card.
Thank you, my name is Ron Pardo, I'm president of West Los Angeles Little League. I represent the over 700 families of West LA Little League. Councilman Coritz threw out our first pitch last year, if you may remember, at our opening ceremonies. It was not, it was, we'll, we'll, we won't comment on it. As you know, money is tight for everyone in our community, not the least of which is our youth sport leagues. This year at West LA Little League, we've been informed by Park and Rec that we will now have to pay for electricity and water. We maintain the fields, frankly, because the city can't. Kids from throughout the city use our public parks to participate year-round in soccer, baseball, softball, football, track, and more. These activities keep them healthy and busy and teach them about hard work, being a part of a team, and goal-setting. This is where they make friends in their communities and often are taken under the wings of nurturing coaches. Youth sports leagues in our community charge nominal fees for participating in the leagues. The dues go towards maintaining the fields, safety, providing uniforms, equipment, and paying for insurance. During these hard times, it has been a struggle for many of our leagues across the city to keep dues as low as possible to ensure every child who wants to participate can play. Our motto at West Los Angeles Little League is that everybody plays regardless of whether their family can afford registration or not. Most of our leagues have scholarship monies also available for those families who are struggling. Thank you.
Alright, there's two other folks that are with you and they've all filled out cards, so if you want to go ahead and speak, Jake and Don, you get two minutes apiece on this, so we want to stay by the rules. Jake Downey or are you Don?
I am Jake Downey and thank you for having me here. I am also a former Toluca baseball player and now I coach my eight-year-old boy Charlie at Toluca Baseball. I thought that I would don his ratty, rather dirty hat for the occasion with the sparkling T on the top. Well, throughout the years and across the nation, local businesses have been instrumental in providing funding to support youth leagues. And as part of the support, most leagues hang banners from the fences to acknowledge them. So these signs would essentially be banned by this proposed ordinance and without the support of local businesses, many youth sports leagues will have to redirect resources and raise dues and turn away children who cannot afford it. In addition, many leagues put up small banners to congratulate team members who win an important tournament or championship, but you can see one of those to my right here on the screen, the Pinto All-Stars, I actually coach in Pinto, so I can speak to that and that's a good group of guys. These banners are a huge source of pride for the children in the leagues and they help to establish a stronger sense of community. These banners would also be essentially banned by the ordinance. So we simply can't afford to hire lobbyists to shepherd our permits through the city, the city's many agencies, all of which have reduced staffing levels, so thank you for my time.
Thank you. And Don Tardino?
Yeah, I'm Don Tardino, I represent Sherman Oaks Little League. Our boundaries are from the- Our boundaries are from the 405 to Vineland and from Sherman Way to Mulholland. We have 700 kids there and four of those kids happen to be mine. Youth sports are a refuge for children and young adults throughout our city. The values they learn participating on a team has, time and time again, proven to have been the difference of many of our youth maturity into productive adults. Please don't put the future of our kids at risk by banning signs and banners that celebrate what's right about our youth. Signs in our parks that support our youth sports programs should be exempt from this ordinance. The signs show community support for our children and young adults and unfortunately, many leagues. The revenue will be lost, will translate into fewer kids being able to participate. Our league, for instance, has over a 2% financial aid given to children that cannot afford to play. Signs at the Little League fields is an American tradition going back to even before Pony League baseball was established in 1940. Such signs have helped grow Little League sports and reinforce the community spirits throughout the involvement of both family and local businesses. Do you want to finish?
All right, thank you. There's another one from East Valley Youth Baseball. Are they with you also?
Yeah, that was Frank Machelli, who had to go open his pizza parlor, but he just, he left a few minutes ago, wanted to say that he appreciates you listening, especially the council office, such as Kucorian, LaBonge, Corretts, others, who help make our leagues possible and make them such fulfilling experience. In closing, I just want to point out, this is the kind of sign we're talking about. These are acknowledging kids and volunteers. We want, we don't want to cover our outfield with them. We just want to have a handful at our backstop to let kids know that they're appreciating our volunteers are acknowledged. And by the way, we do have a lot of girls who play in our leagues.
Thank you, Brendan. And I know that there's public comments, so we can't comment on those items, not on the agenda, but we are aware of the situation.
I'll be back Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Rick Nightengale, followed by Daniel Guss. Mr. Nightengale.
Yeah, Rick Nightengale. You know, this thing about 1% and the 99%. Well, right here, we're the 99%. They're the 1%. What right do they have? And some of you council members bent over backwards and applauding them and so forth, so did our mayor. But what about the 99% here? They're there, the 1% to take all the attention and so forth. It's a little backwards, I think. This whole situation started with Clinton about the Housing Department, that everybody deserves to own a house. No, you don't deserve to own a house. You earn the right to earn to own a house, to save money and so forth. I mean, you've heard I've got a lot of toys and so forth, but I sold my best toy to buy a house back in the 70s. I got married and that's what happens. When you get married and you have toys, you got to sell some of them to make way for the future. So what about the rest of them? Why are we getting stuck with this whole thing? The whole thing was a housing market that everybody deserves a house. No, you earn a house. That's where it all started, back with Clinton, where you, all you Democrats and so forth and the liberals think that everybody deserves to own a house. No, you don't. You have to earn it. And this is what happened. The whole market fell apart. You better bring the blanks and all this other stuff. No, if I was a stockholder, I'd be down there picketing probably too. You need to be at City Hall, you need to be in front of the White House and everything else, because that's where it all started and that's where it's going to end. And it's going to end with the council. The council's supposed to take care of us, the 99%, not the 1%. And you people ought to do your jobs and you're not doing them at all. Because you're taking care of them because they make the most noise, because we can't afford it. Thank you.
Daniel Guss, followed by Sharon Brewer.
Good morning.
Morning, Daniel.
And my parents went to Paul Kucorian's office and they needed something done. They were lucky enough to run into Pat. And Pat is not only that good, she also knows whose parents are whose kids, and she really is an asset to that district. And she's a wonderful lady. On a more serious note, I've told you in recent weeks about the corruption of Ruth Ann Secunda, an animal services commissioner. You already know that she was cited for violating the city's leash laws. But now I have proof that on the same day she received her citation for violating the leash law, she was also cited because she didn't pay her animal license fees for her three dogs. On that date, on June of 2011, Commissioner Ruth Ann Secunda owed hundreds of dollars to the city. So in June of 2011, she paid her license fees for '06 for this dog, this dog, and this dog. Commissioner Secunda in June of 2011 paid her '07 license fee for this dog, this dog, and this dog. Same thing for her '08 licenses, her '09 licenses, her 2010 licenses, her 2011 licenses. Commissioner Secunda was voting on animal license issues at Animal Services for three years, knowing full well that she owed the city hundreds of dollars. It wasn't until she was cited for violating the leash laws that she said, uh-oh, I got caught. And she paid $345. Commissioner Secunda was ripping off money from the city. The other four commissioners knew about it and didn't say anything. Brenda Barnett knew about it and didn't say anything. Assistant GM John Chavez knew about it and didn't say anything. The mayor's office, Jim Bickhart, you know how effective he is, knows about it and didn't do anything. City council needs to do something about this. Ms. Secunda needs to be fired immediately. And the other four commissioners, even though I love Kathy Reardon also, she's the only one who does anything, they all have to go because they all knew about the city being ripped off.
Thank you, Daniel.
Please do something.
Sharon Brewer, followed by Maryam Fogler.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, public comment. Occupy LA costs to city for two months illegal use of City Hall parkland around City Hall. Could be in the millions. Mayor says that is the cost of the First Amendment right. Where does it say that the First Amendment freedom of speech and peaceful assembly allows breaking local laws and the destruction of public property? Regarding the property, refurbishing the parkland around City Hall, the majority of the, going and replacing the grass should be of native and drought-tolerant plants, planted with minimal turf used. Benefit less maintenance and water use for recreation and parks. I believe that the total cost of the two-month Occupy LA be printed in the newspapers with the breakdown by departments and that the total be divided equally between the 14 council members and the mayor, who allowed this encampment to take place. No public funds should be used. The above comments about the Occupy LA issue is my use of the First Amendment right to free speech. Also, with regards to permits for events, there's a proper procedure that the city has that you take out a permit. You are told how much it costs and you're told what the cost will be if you damage city property. People who make public comment deserve city council members to show them respect by paying attention to them when they speak. And the public making comments need to respect the council by not using offensive language or telling someone to shut up. So basically, with John Walsh and Matt Dow, I can go and tell them to be quiet or shut up, but they know you guys can't say anything. And I think they do it on purpose. Thank you.
Maryam Fogler.
Sorry, I put in her name. I thought she was going to be here.
Well, she's not here, so we'll go to Thomas.
My name's there.
Thomas, your last name, the spelling's hard to read.
I apologize. Thomas Nitty.
Nitty, okay.
I'd like to bring something to the council's attention. I represent Patrick De La Torre, who owns an apartment building at 6109 South 8th Street. That's zip code 90043. I'm not sure of the council district. But on 9/15, he had a reap hearing, which shouldn't have occurred because it wasn't properly noticed. And the hearing examiner agreed with that. But some proceedings did occur and the hearing examiner acted improperly with the hearing culminating in the hearing examiner telling security, this is Helen Morales was the examiner, telling the security to disconnect the electricity to my court reporter so that no report can be made of what happened at that hearing. I immediately sent a letter to Douglas Guthrie on November 15th complaining of this behavior and saying that I did not want her to preside at any further hearing of my client. I have that letter here. I received no response to the letter from the Housing Department or Mr. Guthrie at all. I followed up with another letter on November 23rd. Please respond to my earlier letter. My client has another hearing on December 6th, which is Tuesday, and I do not want that particular hearing examiner there. Or alternatively, I want permission to videotape and record the hearing. Because Ms. Morales does not allow any private tape recording of the hearing. She only allows her staff to record and she tells them to turn the recorder on or off at will. I think this is unfair and improper. And on top of that, I'm surprised that I've received no response at all from Douglas Guthrie, the general manager of the Housing Department, to either of the letters expressing my concerns. I have, I know you can't do anything here, but I have copies of the letters for any council members that are interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go downtown to City Hall. We have three speakers down there. Cheryl Eichle, will be our first speaker.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Eichle. I live in District 4. Please forgive me, I like to generally dress professional when I come into the council chambers and speak publicly. However, I was just released from jail last night and haven't had an opportunity to launder any clothes or really do much of anything. I'm also extremely tired. I am a member of Occupy Los Angeles and I do speak for myself today. And I'm concerned about some of the things that happened during the raid on Tuesday night, Wednesday morning. I was there and I was able to ustream it. If you want to see what happened until my battery died, you can go to ustream.tv/channels/occupyla/civicengagement. The Civic Engagement Committee is the committee I started at Occupy Los Angeles. What I'd like to do is read the first paragraph of California Civil Code, Section 52.1. If any persons or persons, whether or not acting under the color of law, interferes by threat, intimidation, or coercion, or attempts to interfere by threat, intimidation, or coercion, with the exercise and enjoyment by any individuals or individuals rights secured by the Constitution or laws of the United States, or the rights secured by the Constitution or laws of this state, the Attorney General or any district attorney or any city attorney may bring civil action for the state of California in order to protect the peaceful exercise and enjoyment of the rights or the rights secured. An action brought by the Attorney General, any district attorney, any city attorney may also seek a civil penalty of $25,000. If this civil penalty is requested, it shall be assessed individually against each person who is determined to have violated this section, and the penalty shall be rewarded to each person whose individual rights under this section are determined to have been violated. I would like you to have the city attorney look into this section. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yvonne Autry.
Good morning. I am Yvonne Michelle Autry. And I'd like to state, you know, there is no oversight committee for this one-world government or for an especially corrupt one-world government. The only oversight committee has got. And I hope that you remember that in your accountability to the people with which you have shirked, you've actually denounced or, you know, kind of refused to adhere or demonstrate that you even have an accountability to the Most High because he works through and in the community. And again, you're obligated, per Constitution, to respect and to listen to and to receive and to consider the grievances and the complaints of the community. And you've been completely, you know, shirking your responsibility as such. I think the Roman Empire didn't see its demise and its corruption, and a corrupt entity will destroy itself. And I see that happening here in solidarity with Occupy LA. So in good faith, like I said, I don't know how you people live with yourselves and go home, considering how you continue to favor the wealthy, the real estate developers and ignoring these people who've been here over a month, considering this woman's testimony and all of the testimonies from those who occupied Los Angeles and continue in solidarity on an international basis. You should be ashamed of yourselves and you should consider their charter agreement, whatever they have presented to you, relative to the concerns of the majority, not the minority. In good faith, I'd like to urge you to return the land of the South Farm to the people. In doing so, you would discourage gang activity. You'd encourage the participation of all members of the community in generating positive cash flow via the farmer's market.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs, our final speaker from downtown City Hall. And then we'll go back to the Valley. Arnold Sachs, two minutes of public comment.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. Good morning. You know, I'm somewhat still out with a verdict on this idea of having a public comment in the middle of the meeting like this. But somewhat, it had some benefits after listening to some of the commentary some of the councilmen made today, especially in regard to staying on topic. Because we heard councilmen discuss the ratepayer advocate and yet nowhere in this agenda is there any mention of ratepayer advocate, the steps needed to take involved in the discussion of ratepayer advocate, the steps needed involved in the commission and all this other. So, Mr. City Attorney, adjust your glasses. And Mr. President, when you said you couldn't comment on the signs for the Little League, you failed because it's not on the agenda. You failed to say anything to the councilmen who were discussing the ratepayer advocate because it's not on the agenda. Mr. Rosendahl mentioned something about the water, the river project, two, three, and four items, two, three, and four being important for the council members to listen to, but not important enough to reopen for public comment. So there's somewhat of a disingenuous idea there. Mr. Cardenas, the process for donations, because you're the stewards of the city, the budget for the city. So I'm wondering, especially again with the river projects, and there was a story in yesterday's newspaper about Occupy LA, Steve Lopez, he writes about, the Occupy movement is angry over the corrupting of power of money in politics. And I was thinking to myself, what about the corrupting of politics and money? Because we have like your new pro tem, Mr. Reyes, who was on the gold line construction authority before it even existed.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Back downtown to City Hall, Don DePierman.
Thank you. Sorry. Anyway, I also like to see public comment in the beginning where it usually is. Anyway, I was the first one here, so it's funny at 9:15. So anyway, I escaped to tell Mr. Wesson, who will soon be president, I'm glad you love the public because one way to get the public to love you is to love them back. Anyway, let's see. I hoping, oh yeah, you put the public comment laugh near the end, so hoping that the public will go away. And it's funny that the mayoral candidates are doing city business on the day that the city council is in bad eyes. I remind the two mayoral candidates that you need the Valley to become mayor. So anyway, I think that city council, not the taxpayer, should pay for the residue left by the Occupy LA. You encouraged them to be here and you told them to stay, well, not Mr. Councilman Zine, but a lot of them had told them that they should stay as long as they wanted to and that's what caused all this problem. Anyway, I hope the Occupy LA continues with this message. Please make your position clear, though, so it can be heard. But you should be going to the federal government, who actually is responsible for a lot of these things. The city council can't do things that are done by the jurisdiction of the federal government. We should, we, I don't think that this, our USA should be bailing out Europe. I heard we're going to be giving millions to Europe, to bail out Europe. I'd like to see one of those useless resolutions by the city council to say our government shouldn't be bailing out Europe. When many of our people are losing their homes, are homeless, are unemployed, and public employees of all kinds are being bombarded with concessions, and we bail out Europe, except for DWP doesn't give any concessions. Our Occupy LA lives in unsanitary and liberal conditions.
Jeffrey Woodruff. Thank you. You got, again, two minutes on public comment, ladies and gentlemen. Two minutes is the time that you're allocated. We want to accommodate all the speakers. We want to accommodate all the speakers.
Okay, good. Hello. My name is Jeffrey Woodruff. I wanted to thank you guys for having meetings out here in the Valley, first of all. I am a member of Occupy Sea Sun, but I am speaking on behalf of myself. I wanted to extend a thanks to the Sun Valley officers who were here earlier this evening. I'm a lifelong resident of Sun Valley, and over the last nine months, I've been really impressed with the conduct of the LAPD. Over the last, over the last years, and during the 80s and 90s, seeing what has been going on over the last several weeks, has been very encouraging to me as we move forward. However, there are some comments that I want to make about the events that happened Tuesday night. I do believe the city attorney set the bail excessively high and punitive for most of the people who were arrested. I also believe that citizen journalist Tyson Header, who's currently being held on a bail of $20,000 for battering a police officer, even though it's been released on video, that that is not the case. Waving a camera at someone and saying, "Hey, why did you push me?", is not battering a police officer, and it's not grounds for $20,000 bail. That is completely unfair. I understand that the situation of Tuesday was a very difficult decision that had to be made. It's a very complicated thing with park rules and federal law, but I do believe it could have been handled better, and I do believe the city attorney was asleep at the switch on this one, and if there is a way that you guys could hold him accountable on that, I would like to see that. Thank you.
Mr. Arias. Raisa Arias.
Hi, I would just like to say that I feel like there needs to be a little bit more transparency amongst the majority of voters, and even ordinary citizens have no idea who you people are. I mean, like, are you guys hiding? I don't know, I just feel there needs to be some type of, like, public outreach, and I know you guys have, you know, public meetings, but maybe that's just not enough. And how can you claim to represent us when the majority of us don't know who you are or what you're doing in our names? I guess, I don't know, we just need to set some limitations. So, yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you. Angra Patel, and our final speaker will be Jason Ackerman, and those will be our two final speakers for today.
Right, presentations and proclamations on Friday. I actually like what my councilman did today, right? He tied in a motion to his presentation. Wow, public time being used a little bit efficiency? Let's try and do that. You know, I railed against Councilmember Wesson last time, because there was literally a chihuahua in a tutu during the presentation. Talk about a dog and pony show, sorry, sir, but that is, that deserves some mention. A chihuahua in a tutu during public time. It's amazing what we use our public time on, and that's something that I, every time on Friday when I come, I'm going to continue to make that point, because this is public time, and, you know, you guys are sitting here laughing and smirking, I appreciate, and, you know, we go back and forth this way and that way, and I hope you also appreciate the fact that I care about what's going on here. I may be combative at times, but I do try to pay attention to what's going on, and, this is amazing right here, right, what Daniel Gus says, there's evidence of one of our commissioners literally breaking the law and abusing their power. Can we go after them? I've been to some ethics meetings where the Board of Commissioners, surprise, appointed by you politicians, they're supposed to investigate you guys. There's stacks, there's literally stacks of evidence, where developers pay money to in contributions to either school board members or politicians, and then you guys give them contracts, surprise. You know, we all know this, generally speaking, most of us are paying attention and see this. Anyway, on Tuesday, I was down at City Hall. I was actually there for a Department of Neighborhood Empowerment meeting, university partnerships with neighborhood councils. I think that's an important one that we're, they're working on, but I walk outside and, you know, it's going down, so I spent the day over there at City Hall, I paid attention to that, and one of the things that I've been, I've been really talking about is our, the confrontation is not between the people and the police. I think you people are using the police as a wedge, and probably rightfully so from your position, right? My battle is not with the police, it's with some of you.
Thank you. I just want to make a distinction between argumentative and combative. There is a distinction between the two, and we have one, I guess that's our final speaker. No other, well, argumentative, you can argue, get combative, you can go to jail. There is one more, Jason Ackerman. Jason Ackerman, our final speaker. That's the difference, colleagues. One's verbal, one's physical.
Hi. So, thanks for having me, let me come up here again. I want to thank you guys for coming out here to the San Fernando Valley. I'm a lifelong resident of the San Fernando Valley, and I feel that in a lot of discussions, we are often underrepresented. We are, you know, you come here once every two months, so that's about 3% of the time. We're 1/3 of the tax base, and we get 1/3 of your attention, sorry, not 1/3 of your attention, 1, sorry, 3%, I'm not a math guy, so pardon me. But, you know, I feel like we are underrepresented, and a lot of urban planning and developments goes on. I feel that while the orange line, you know, mass transit-wise is a step in the right direction, it is insulting, the fact that we have to have a busway when we're getting, the fact that we're going to get, that it's going to take longer to get two train, that it's going to take longer to get one train from Westwood to Van Nuys than it is to get two trains to the sea, is ridiculous. The west side has a lot of infrastructure in place. The Valley currently, aside from two red line stations, has no rail, and that is not acceptable. That is not acceptable because we are trying, we need to break away from this automobile culture, we need to go back to the way Los Angeles used to be, where we ran our people around on electric streetcars and light rails and heavy rails. And it's just infuriating every time that I, you know, that if you guys are here 3% of the time, how much chance do we have, chance do we have to make our voice heard? You know, how about coming out here once a week? How about that as a starting point? Because we're here, and we're tired of being neglected. Thank you.
That completes our public comment for today. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, Item 12, which was called special by Mr. Parks, I believe is ready to be voted on.
Number 12, colleagues, seeing no one on the queue, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, 12 was approved. Next item, please.
Item 13, called special by Councilmember Alarcon, an amending motion 13A, has been circulated.
13, we have two cards on 13. Downtown, Arnold Sacks. Let's go downtown. Tara Baracas.
Thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. This is regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be overseen by the Los Angeles Housing Department, and it's wonderful how you're implementing this concern over the trust fund, but yet you still have never taken any action about the Housing Department and the nominees to the Housing Department when you had them in chambers, what, the end of June last year, this year? And people complained about, there was some scandals in the Housing Department, and the mayor had a meeting, and he spoke to a group of people and told them that there would be no nominees to the Housing Department until after the scandal had been thoroughly investigated, and had the meeting, spoke to the people, ended the meeting, the next day, put in two nominations, and the council, in their wisdom, said, "We need to control the center table," and there was discussion regarding who was sitting in the Housing Department, and nothing was done. So, here's the council being open and transparent, and I'm not being combative here, Mr. President, I'm just being factual. So, I'm really happy to hear that you're concerned about the funds, but not concerned enough about the people who are going to be implementing the use of the funds to do anything about that. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that Tara has left downtown, so that brings us back to City, Van Nuys City Hall. Mr. Alarcon.
Councilmembers, this is regarding the NOFA. I have a very mild amendment that I'm requesting that the Housing Department come back with a report in 90 days, as to the potential inclusion of boosting points for projects that include a project labor agreement. Obviously, those projects cost more, but they provide more in the way of benefits packages to the workers, and in general, particularly if they're locally oriented, will provide more benefits to the community as well. So, it's a simple amendment, doesn't make the change, it's just ask them to come back with a report in consideration of making that change.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Alarcon, could we ask, as you asked for that motion, to include what a PLA includes, because the ones I've seen have all been negotiated independently, and so we certainly like to make sure it's local hire, and are those the elements that make up the PLA? And so, if we could ask that be added to your motion.
Mr. Alarcon, is that satisfactory with you? Okay, that'll be added. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Okay, on that matter, then, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Very well. Next item, please.
Item 14, called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer, we have Arnold Sacks on this matter also. Mr. Sacks.
Sure, Sacks first, please.
For public comment, Mr. Sacks, item number 14, which our last item of the day, colleagues. Mr. Sacks, 14.
Yes, thank you again, item 14. Although I have no real problems with the actual work that's going to be done, but to not require the resurfacing of the entire street, what happens when there's a series of rainstorms, and the area around the part that has been repaved starts to buckle, or starts to fracture from cars running over it and water seepage, and the repair has to be made then? Wouldn't it even be more costly to not repave the whole street? There are probably numerous examples throughout the city of LA that you could use to show that the band-aid, band-aiding of street repair leads to more street repair than actually doing the process right the second time around.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a friendly amendment, to ask the clerk to please change the street name from San Fe to Santa Fe, and ask that this be forwarded forthwith, please. Thank you.
Without opposition. All right, colleagues, on number 14, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posting and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zine requests to be excused on December 7th for city business, that meets council policy.
That's approved.
Councilmember Englander requests to be excused on January 17th and 20th for city business, and that meets council policy.
That's approved.
That clears the desk.
Mr. Cardenas.
Oui.
Mr. Labonge.
All of us feel a sense of relief that the storm, the windstorm, has died down, and I just wanted to put a shout out to thank all the community as we work through this, but especially thank the Department of Water Power, or those working in the high lines throughout the night, trying to restore power, and also our Public Works, police and fire, and the whole team. I was downtown yesterday, joined with the mayor over at EOC, and got a grasp. What was so interesting about this particular windstorm was the first time it basically came through the corridor between the Arroyo, the Arroyo Seco, and through that part of the center city. Most of the outages were in the center of the city, not in the San Fernando Valley, which is typical. But that would be said, I wanted to join us, all of us do want to thank you for that. And I have just a quick announcements also. Tonight, Toluca Lake, there's an open house at Toluca Lake on Riverside Drive. It's a fun evening, if you're for any part of the Valley of the city, come to Toluca Lake on Riverside Drive, just east of Coinga, for one fun evening of walking and open house shops. Tomorrow night will be the Christmas tree lighting in Las Feliz at Franklin and Hillhurst, right next to the Las Feliz Library, so everyone is welcome to attend on those special events. Thank you, Mr. Zine.
And Mr. Labonge, I understand Griffith Park was closed for the first time in a long time.
Well, a tree as far as from here to Station 39 across the street did fall. I saw it early on the morning there, and big forces of wind knocked out about a 60-year-old pine tree over 100 feet tall, but the crews from Wreck-It Parks are working hard, and they did open the road, and the park is back open again.
And we appreciated your live report on KNX News Radio 1070, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to invite the community to the 9th Annual Tree Lighting at the constituency center at December 8th, which is Thursday, 8475 South Vermont. It starts at 6:30. Also, to invite them to the annual, 9th Annual Toy Giveaway sponsored by the 8th District, it's going to be Saturday, December 10th, 10:00 a.m. at the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza. And also, dealing with foreclosures and many homeowner issues, the Neighborhood Housing Services of LA County is holding a seminar Saturday, December 3rd, at the Crenshaw Christian Center, 7901 South Vermont Avenue, and that starts at 9:00. It goes from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And also, just like to welcome, to congratulate and say happy birthday to Marco Duarte, our LAPD security.
Let's get him on camera. Let's get Marco on camera. Our senior lead officer, Sergeant Arms.
Congratulations. Get closer, get closer. The camera.
A man who keeps us safe here with his colleague, Steve Ors.
Okay. Oh, we got a camera right there?
The chief always remembers a birthday.
Thank you, man.
Oh, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Anything further, Mr. Parks? Okay, thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, and happy birthday, Marco. We appreciate what you do. First, I want to, second, what Mr. Labonge said, we had a lot of outages in my district, it went around the clock, and everybody was working around the clock, and my constituents were very happy to see the combined departments getting engaged in it, so I agree. Thanks to those departments. Now, a couple of events. Playa del Rey, 8th Annual Toy Drive and Winter Shelter. I'll be going there, it'll be at noon when the pizza comes out, but it's from 10:00 to 2:00, and this is at Waterford Street and Tracks Avenue, near Pershing Drive in Playa del Rey. What happens is every year, the community collects toys for upcoming holidays for Children's Hospital, and also stuff for animals, all kinds of things for your pets, so if you're into helping other people, please come to that event, you'll enjoy it. Secondly, on Sunday, we will be honoring active-duty military personnel and their family. 4,000 of these active military folks and their families will show up at the VA property, and it will be from noon until 5:00. And Jim Belushi and the Sacred Heart Band are going to be performing. I go every year, as a veteran, I honor the active-duty folks. It's an amazing holiday party, and I urge folks to get engaged in it. I think it's a terrific thing. I just want to make a comment about a motion or a resolution I hope to put in next week. I just got word that in Nigeria, their anti-gay attitude is so serious that they are talking about imprisonment and killing gay people just for being gay. They're laughing among themselves as they put some legislation in their state senate, and then it will go to the state house, and God knows, if my people are going to be threatened, I think the United States of America should take serious action with Nigeria if that happens. More next week when I officially present that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And what do you call that vest again? How did you describe your vest?
Festive.
Festive, I like.
Festive holiday vest, not a big tomato.
Okay, all right, I wanted to.
Proper description.
I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Tonight, Igerock Tree Lighting, 40th Annual, at the local city hall, 2035 Colorado Boulevard. The Herman tree lighting has been canceled. The tree there has encountered some severe damage from the winds, and this Sunday at 1:00, we have the 67th Annual Northeast Christmas Parade, Holiday Parade, to Figaroa, through the avenues there in northeast LA. Wonderful event, draws many, many people, and myself, Councilmember Reyes, have been there for the last years, and anybody else who wants to go out and enjoy the holidays with northeast Los Angeles, Mr. Labonge, you're all welcome to come. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon, announcements?
I'd like to announce the 44th Annual Pacoima Parade, Christmas Parade. The holiday parade will begin at 11:00, but there'll be a reception at the Neighborhood City Hall in, on Van Nuys Boulevard at 9:00. So, we're expecting a very good crowd. We usually get about 4,000 or 5,000 people out, and if the weather holds up, we expect it'll be just as good this year. So, I hope everybody has a chance to come to the Northeast Valley Holiday Parade on Van Nuys Boulevard in Pacoima.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Any other announcements, colleagues? I have a couple that I'd like to bring to your attention. Saturday, December 3rd, the 46th Annual Watts Willowbrook Christmas Parade, 12:00 noon, and that and that will take place down in South Los Angeles. Everyone's invited to that. The other activities taking place that public needs to know, so maybe they can attend for the benefit of our great communities, is on Sunday. It's the 12th Annual Walk of Ages, the Jewish Home for the Aging, and that's at 7:30 at the Jewish Home. It will be on Victory Boulevard and Wilbur. Everyone's invited to participate. Helps the Jewish Home for the Aging, one of their major fundraising events. Also, at 11:00 on Sunday, December 4th, the 8th Annual Motor for Toys Charity Car Show, and that'll take place in Warner Center at the Anthem Building. That's on Owen's Mouth, just south of Victory Boulevard. And then there's the 31st Annual Spirit of San Pedro Parade, and that's in San Pedro. People are invited to that event in San Pedro. Tarzana Community Center Cultural Center Holiday Party, that's from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Tarzana Community Center. And there are many, many events taking place this holiday season, so we want to inform you of that. And finally, on December 4th, Sunday at 7:00 p.m., St. Sophia's Cathedral, 14th Annual Christmas Music Fest on the Byzantine Dome. Glory to God in the Highest, and that's going to take place at St. Sophia's Cathedral, and the great folks have a great choir that Sunday evening. With that, adjourned motions. Please stand adjourned motions. Mr. Cardenas, adjourned motion.
Thank you very much, colleagues. It's a great sadness that I announced that Angel Soto entered into eternal rest on November 19th, 2011. He was 59 years of age and resided in Stanton, California. Angel was born in Guanajuato, Mexico on October 1st, 1952. Angel worked as an automobile mechanic for 40 years. Angel was preceded in death by his father, Fernando Soto. Angel is lovingly survived by his son, Marco Andres Soto, daughter Vanessa Soto, mother Antonia Calvan, and other relatives and friends who will miss him dearly. Thank you.
Adjourned motions, colleagues. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This completes this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We will return on Tuesday. Have a lovely afternoon and weekend, Los Angeles. Signing off from Van Nuys City Hall.